This meeting of the Reading Municipal Light Department Board of Commissioners is being recorded via Zoom for distribution to the community television stations in Reading, North Reading, Wilmington and Lynnfield. The RMLD Board of Commissioners recognizes the importance of hearing public comment at the discretion of the Chair on items on the official agenda as well as items not on the official agenda. We ask that all questions or comments from the public be directed to the Chair, to all parties, including members of the RMLD Board, act in a professional and courteous manner when addressing the Board upon any comments. Most recognized by the Chair, all persons addressing the Board shall state their name and address our discussion. It is the rule of the Chair to maintain order in all public comment or ensuing discussion. With that said, Phil Pacino, you'll be the Board's Secretary tonight.
Very good, yep.
And I still hear a little bit of background noise, so if you could mute it, whoever is...
It's whoever, it's 857-998-1606.
That would be me. Okay, let me see what I can do.
It keeps on clicking over to show that you're talking when you're not.
Yeah, if you can just mute it, then when you want to talk, just go ahead and say unmute.
What I can do here.
So what I'd like to do is certainly welcome individuals to the meeting tonight. Gail Page, Jim Satherway, there's Colleen, she's in.
I'm here, sorry.
It's okay. I think we've got some other folks who are supposed to be joining us as well, though at least we're on the list, so as soon as they come in, we will certainly welcome them as well. So in terms of items, we're on to terms of public comment. The Citizens, RMLD Citizens Advisory Board. Jason, I believe you're here tonight. Oh, there you are. Hi, Jason.
Hi, just joined. We actually just joined about 30 seconds ago.
Oh, my. Good. Okay, good. Do you have any comments? Jason says it's fresh in your mind.
No, not this time, thank you.
Okay, great. And the liaisons, Karen, you're there. We see that Vanessa was also invited.
I'm here. So Vanessa will not be attending tonight, so lucky you, you just have me.
Okay, that's wonderful. That's great. Thank you, Karen. And in terms of public comment with the public, Lynn, there I see the Lynn champion there. She's in Lynn as well. Ameen, nice to see you.
Hello, I'm Gail Page speaking here. Let me get my video on so you can see who I am. Hi, everybody. I would like to just introduce myself quickly. I'm here, I live in Woburn, Mass, at 8 Washington Terrace in Woburn. I'm here in my capacity as Chair of the Green Sanctuary.
Excuse me for one second, Gail, I'm sorry. We're still getting lots of noise from the phone. If someone could please mute their phone so that Gail could speak. Thank you. Okay, go ahead, Gail.
Sorry, hold on. Working on it here.
So I chair the Green Sanctuary. And we...
Just a second, Gail, we'll have you a second. I want to make sure you get her.
Thank you.
All right.
Okay, do we have mute?
I believe that the host can mute everybody.
Oh, can you mute it? Oh, my, yes. Thank you, Gail. Perfect.
So anyway, my interest in being here, I'm a citizen of Woburn, so my, RMLD is not my electricity provider, but as Chair of the Green Sanctuary, many of the members in our church and in the Green Sanctuary itself are members, are citizens of the towns that RMLD serves. And electricity is a key issue for climate change, which is what the Green Sanctuary is concerned about, dealing with that. And so we're here really to see how we can partner with you. You folks have a very important role in the lives of the residents of these towns, and we're very excited to be working with you, to have a chance to get to know you and what you're doing. And it sounds like tonight will be a particularly interesting meeting with talks about renewables and portfolios. So we hope that this will be the start of getting to know you and you getting to know us and helping each other to do the work we need to do to make the world a better place for everyone.
Great, thank you very much, Gail. Appreciate that. Would anybody else like to offer a comment from the public? If not, perhaps we could move on to item number five from the report of the Citizens Advisory Board meeting. I'm not sure who was the representative tonight. Do we know, Tracy, who was the representative?
It was supposed to be Bob. Did you attend?
Yes, I did attend the meeting. I just came from the meeting. That's why I was a minute late.
Okay, any comment on any items you care to report on, Bob?
No, it was a very well-run meeting. They discussed, Colleen and Chuck discussed all the topics that were on the agenda. I thought it went extremely well and ran at a great pace and good participation.
Great, thank you very much. On item number six, we've been requested, or actually it's been sort of a mutual type of thing, that we have a monthly meeting of the RMLD Commissioner, I say Commissioner, not Commissioners, it's not plural, individual, with the Reading Select Board. In other words, at an appropriate meeting on a monthly basis, that one representative, I'm proposing that representative from the RMLD Commissioner Board attend the Select Board meeting to basically just update them on terms of where we are on any of the various topics. As you all know, at the last meeting, we explained the payment to the town of Reading, and we did vote on that in our last meeting, and that's been moving forward. But there's many other items in terms of renewable energy, solar, et cetera, that the town is certainly interested in, Green Communities being a top one of those. So I'd like to ask, we don't have to vote on it here, but I would like to ask that by our next meeting, we could have a discussion here tonight, but I would like to do is have at least one person designated to attend on a monthly basis that meeting and for a select period of time. In other words, so we know what the time bracket is, and I'm sure that Mark Docster will tell us what is the appropriate time, so that, you know, it's not a three-hour meeting, it's, you know, anywhere from a five to 15-minute period of time that we can report on what's happening at the RMLD with concerns with, you know, Reading and our other communities. Is there any discussion on that?
Yeah, John, is this during a regular meeting, or is this a separate meeting, or what, when exactly?
During the regular meeting, Phil. During the regular meeting.
During the regular meeting, okay.
Yeah, so it'd just be an agenda item, assuming that we had something to say. I mean, there's no sense in showing up if we don't have anything of import, but the idea is to try to establish a good relationship and a continuing relationship with the Select Board. And as they send liaisons such as Karen, for example, to us, and we've agreed that, at least with Mark and myself, we think it would be a good idea to have a liaison from the RMLD attend their meeting as well, to see what their concern's on and literally hear it firsthand. I mean, in the past, as we all know, there's been miscommunication going on, and there's no reason for that to happen. So I'd like to ask that we consider that anyway as a possible scenario.
Mr. Chair, may I make a comment?
Please, go right ahead.
Thank you. I did not know that Mark specifically asked you to do that, but that is a great idea. I think that we are trying to, you know, let's call it under the umbrella of Green Communities, we're trying to move forward with electrification, accommodating and planning for more electric vehicles. You guys are working on some initiatives, some initiatives like more community solar that we need to know about. I think, you know, when we start looking at what you're doing and what we're doing, we should have exactly what John said, we should have a closer relationship, and we would love to have you guys come and update us and help us stay on top of when we should be working with you on certain projects. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Bob, did you have a comment as well?
Yes, I liked your idea, being on the docket and having an agenda item, that's very, very good, because you just don't want to have it open-ended, you want to go in and then move on. Helps their meeting stay on pace as well, so.
Okay, good. Any other comments from anyone? If not, we'll try to put this in place for the next meeting, perhaps I'll attend the July meeting, and then we'll do a rotational, just as we do with many of our other both committees and chairmanship and whatnot, through the Board of Commissioners. And we're on to item number seven, which is discussion on renewable energy, and I think Mr. Talbot had some comments to make on that. If you would, Dave?
Hey, everybody.
There you go, you're here.
I'm going to, I'm actually driving, I'm going to pull over.
Is that a cop on your tail?
I don't think so. Well, one thing I'd like to just, for the folks who are there, and I didn't catch your name from Woburn, are you still there?
Gail Page, yes, she's here.
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay. So as we enter these hot summer months and a very hot day-to-day, we get, Colleen and her team have been very good about getting peak warnings out to a level that we've never really had before. I did a little research this week into the carbon consequences of the peak power plants that are switched on only when these peak days occur. And there's one in Ludlow that we're part of, and so are a lot of other utilities. It burns number two heating oil, which has a carbon emissions that's about 50% more per kilowatt or megawatt hour than natural gas. Plus, the fact that it cycles on and off means, I don't have the exact numbers, but I wouldn't be surprised if, when the power is coming from this type of plant at peak consumption times, it's double the carbon dioxide emissions even of natural gas power plants. So as a first order of business for everybody in our community, you, the groups you're working with, is to drive home the importance of acting on those peak warnings that are coming out from the Department through many means, Twitter, emails, other means, and act on those and spread the word around. Because the consequences of that, if your goal is to reduce the carbon dioxide emissions, that is the immediate thing all of us can do. Now, it also dovetails with the financial health of the utility and of the towns, you know, we serve and whose budgets we help support. So I just want to get that across, that there's, it would be great to quantify that more precisely than I just have, but it is a huge source of carbon emissions. And if we could, every bit you turn things down, it's coming off the top of that type of plant during the peak days. So that's number one.
Is that Dave who is speaking?
Yep, I'm sorry. Yeah, Dave Talbot.
Okay, hi, Dave. It's nice to meet you this way. Thank you very much for that. And that's the kind of thing we'd love to partner with you on, to lift up information like that that can help residents of not only the RMLD towns, but we can at least do those towns and even maybe get a wider group beyond those towns to know about that. So thank you.
Well, you're welcome. And thank the Department, because they've done a better job than, it's really a more robust communication system than we've ever had before, and it's a huge impact and it's immediate. People focus on, oh, you know, solar panels and this and that, and we want that, but it's costly, it takes a long time, and the benefits are actually, you know, the benefits of just turning stuff down on the peak days. I'd love to see more details, but they're just massive. Now, getting back to the topic of, you know, the renewable energy, what I would just like to see us get clarity, Chuck and Colleen have done a great job and have put out some very detailed presentations on this. It's a complicated topic. I would like to better understand, you know, what the definitions are, and I know there's more than one, of green, renewable, sustainable, non-carbon. Have us all understand what those are, set a goal for what percentage we want, and to understand the consequences in terms of costs of a couple of maybe two or three different options, so that we're not just saying, oh, we want this much renewable power, we want to know what the costs are, and we want the public to, I am speaking for myself, would like to be able to tell, for us to know what the definitions are, for us to be able to review and see some options, and to understand the associated costs, including potential rate impacts of various options, and then have the public, you know, let us know, and, you know, we'll do, I would like to see us do what the public would like us to do, but it starts with clarity on the definitions and seeing two or three or four different options going forward. I think most of our power supply, we've not purchased it, you know, once you go, Chuck knows, of course, there's backwards and forwards, but once you go two, three, four years out, most of our power supply is not yet purchased, so we have an opportunity to shape that potentially. You know, it's not, but anyway, that's all. So I'd like to see us have that type of process, and that's basically what I wanted to say.
Thank you, Dave. Perhaps we could put that as an agenda item on our next meeting. And Chuck, I know you're going to talk a little bit about that tonight as you usually do, but I think getting the definitions straight and consistent between the state, between us, et cetera, would be a very valid thing to do, and we can make, as Dave said, informed decisions then about where we'd like to go and what the cost might be. So perhaps we could put that on the July agenda to try and get, and we could talk about it offline in terms of more definition of what it is we'd like to see or do. Does that make sense?
If you're asking me, I think so, yeah.
Yes.
Okay, great.
Yeah, I would say so. That's fine.
Okay, thank you, Phil.
Yep.
Okay, is there any other comment on the renewable energy issue?
You had, I was very pleased to hear that Dave mentioned he was interested in input from the public, and I don't know if there's any way in particular you'd like to get feedback from us, or how would you like to do that, John?
Feedback in which sense, Gail?
Well, defining what renewables are, how, what the people in the group think would be the best choices for moving forward to fulfill the Global Warming Solutions Act of Massachusetts and so forth.
I think, yeah, I mean, if you would like to provide us with your thoughts on that, we'd certainly incorporate them into our analysis. We've got a number of things we have to deal with and balance from both an economic perspective as well as renewable energy and trying to do the right thing for the planet. I mean, all of us want to be green, there's absolutely no question about that. So the question is, what can we do in the near term versus the far term, and can we work our way to it? And that's kind of the way we've been working here at the RMLD, is how do we change our sources as we move forward? Because you just can't do it overnight. The contracts are negotiated out, well, Chuck will get into this, he's the expert on it. So you just can't turn on a dime, literally, on it, but you can lay out a roadmap, and again, it comes down to, you know, a combination of different variables we have to do trade-offs on. And, you know, cost is one of those. I mean, you know, it's, it is an issue in terms, we try to keep and provide the lowest cost to our four towns, because we see that as an economic advantage for businesses, as well as a benefit for all of our customers, our residential customers, and we're considerably lower than the IOUs. And that didn't just happen overnight, that happened because that's part of our charter. We're really focused on that, and in this time of 15% unemployment, or whatever you want to call it, 13%, 15% unemployment, and with a number of people on fixed incomes, we're extremely sensitive to those people as our customers. So it's a balancing act, and, but anyway, I'm sorry to be long-winded. Any further comments on the renewable energy? Again, we'll put this on the docket. Colleen, you had a comment, please?
Can I make a suggestion for consideration? So we have a liaison from the RMLD that goes to the Climate Action Committee meetings, and what Chuck and I... Trace, can you mute him? Okay. What Chuck and I found was that we asked the Climate Action Committee Chair to come and talk to Chuck and I, and it was really a good learning session. It really was. They learned a lot, and it was an exchange. And I think I mentioned that at that particular meeting, you know, they talked about, you know, what about a rebate on panels, like upgrading panels? And we took that into Chuck's group, and we did the analysis, and next thing you know, we got rebates on panel upgrades. And it's awesome. It helps with the electrification, it allows people to maybe be able to put in a heat pump and make those type of environmental conversions. The point was, it was a great meeting. So maybe you might want to consider a representative from your group coming to the same meeting. It's just kind of a discussion thing. You know, as you know, we have policies, we have to get board votes and stuff like that, so it's just a discussion. Gail, if you think that's the type of format that you might enjoy in education, and, you know, Chuck and I said that we would meet with them once a quarter, that maybe you could come to that.
That sounds delightful. That sounds like a great way to partner all around with a number of people who are concerned.
I just want to, I want to keep the communication, everyone on the same page, because I know there's a lot of active groups that want to do environmental goods, but it has to do with us, we want to make sure that you're not getting different messages about the RMLD, what we're doing, not doing. We have a business model, we have statutes, we got lots of things that we can't do and lots of things we can do. So it's a good thing to be on the same page. So if you want to send me your email, we can have Chuck reach out to you, and like I said, it's about once a month, and it's just an informal discussion, if that's okay.
That's great. Thank you. I will do that.
If there are no more comments, I'd like to move on to item number eight, approval of the Board minutes. Phil, would you please read the motion?
Moved that the Board approved the meeting minutes of December 2nd, 2019, January 7th, 2020, and February 27th, 2020, on the recommendation of General Manager.
Do I have a second? I need a second.
Second, I was on mute.
Thanks, Bob. Appreciate it. Any discussion? If not, let's take a vote, please.
Phil, I.
John Sempeck, aye. Okay, good.
Talbot, aye. Put me back on mute so I don't keep bothering everybody.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Coulter, aye.
Thank you, Bob. Okay, good. Please have a show that is four zero, yes, it is Tracy. A lot of work, Tracy, with one, Dave Hennessy not being here. We're on to item number nine, the General Managers' Report. Colleen, if you'd be so kind.
All right, a couple of main campus updates, real quick. We finally finished the roof. We had some construction delays because of COVID. We were meeting the Board of Health, and then construction, as long as we had a stand-down, we were able to, with our construction workers, we were able to continue. So we just recently finished the roofs, and no more five buckets of water pouring into my office. So that's completed. The customer parking lot, I mean, we did do a press release, John came in, we took some pictures. The parking lot flow, I mean, we got a lot out of this. We got more spaces, we got more, we have three stanchions, we have one stanchion for a dual EV port, and then we got two future ports that we electrically tied into it. We got rid of all of the broken asphalt, no more me having to park on ice so that ice slip and no one else slips. Just an amazing beautification project. Benches, I think if you haven't seen it, you should stop by and take a look at it. It's really wonderful. This also allows us to go, the next piece will be to lock the back gate, so to be in compliance with the NERC. We're really supposed to have our delivery section and our electric warehouse sectioned off, so there will be no parking back there. So when we have vendors, when we have, back to our meetings here, everyone can park out front. Out back will be fob-gated, you won't be able to get in. So it all works out perfect. Come on by and look at it, I think it came out great. The last piece is, we had an OSHA audit in, an OSHA audit, because the municipal light plants became OSHA compliant in February 2019, and we had a wooden deck out back that was considered condemned. So to save money, we just turned it into a patio, you know, and we're not going to spend the money on the flower boxes. We actually found a bunch of old, yeah, very, very old granite blocks that were holding up the stacks for Station 1, so we saved them, and we're going to use those instead of planters. And it's really, really good. All we have left is to pour the stairs, and that will be, and that will be completed. So that's the update on the campus. The COVID response, very simple, we still are not open, the Board of Health still hasn't opened, but we are working diligently inside to have our employees come back. We have Plexiglas molded shields that have been put around any of the cubicle offices to keep the six-foot distances, and engineering where they're actually in cubicles, when they stand up, they're within six feet of each other, so we're building these small, they're like, it's like wooden straps with Plexiglas across it that can be easily cleaned. And so we're getting the building ready. We have little red stickers, and we'll have a sign board for the lobby that says, you know, if you come in, you have to wear a mask covering your face and nose. We only allow five people in there, they'll stand on the red dots. We don't usually have more than a couple, few people anyways, most people pay online. So we're getting ready, and we'll probably roll some employees back next week, and then a couple more the following week, and we anticipate that by then, maybe the public lobby will be open. We're going to delay on public meetings in the AV room cafeteria and stuff like that for the foreseeable future until we hear otherwise. So that's the COVID update, and everyone's healthy.
Yes.
20-year agreement update. Kathleen's done a great job. I mean, we sent out all the letters, we got three of the four votes. Wilmington voted, they sent in their certified letter. Reading voted, they're going to send us a copy of the letter on Monday and then send it certified. North Reading voted, they're going to send us a copy email letter on Monday and then send it certified. Lynnfield, however, in speaking with their town council, they did not switch from town meeting to the Select Board making that decision. And unfortunately, it didn't make the cut for the minimum town meeting, I think it's like this week or next week, so it won't be till the fall. So the way I understand it is that if there's two, there's two types of changes in the 20-year agreement. One is monetarily, and that would go back to the legislation. If it has to do with something like this, where it's just being delayed because of an issue, or somebody wants better representation or something like that, that's something that the group can handle. So I think we just, you know, it's a 10-year notice to continue, so it doesn't change anything, and so in the fall, we'll get that signature, and then the last piece is then, once we get all the certified letters Kathleen sends around, and everyone has to sign all the documents, and then we're good for another 10 years. So that's kind of the process, where we are, and that's what's going on with Lynnfield.
Do you think there'll be any issue with Lynnfield, Colleen?
I don't think it's a question of an issue like that, I just think that they're having a very small town meeting, and it just didn't make the cut. I don't know, we didn't get any impression from Bob Curtin that there was a problem.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Yes, the architect of that, I'm glad to hear that we got, we got all this, we're moving forward, so, you know, at this point in time. I can't imagine Lynnfield having a problem, I mean, because, you know, we have the residential side, their problem was usually with Peabody on the other side of the town, so.
Right.
Well, we'll continue to follow up with them.
Okay. Good job.
Okay, the quarterly goal review? Did you want me to talk to that, Colleen?
I think you were just, were you gonna, I think what you were going to do was talk about what date you want to do it. You sent me the review process, and we were going to set aside a meeting date to actually go over it?
That's correct. We have, we're trying a different process this year, and we're going to a quarterly review, much more of a discussion. review, much more of a discussion as opposed to yearly ranking by points, which we've used since forever. Basically, just to get up to speed, be more modern about how to review people, and do it on a timely basis. Unfortunately, COVID-19 threw a monkey wrench into our first quarter, so that didn't really happen. So what I'd like to do is ask Tracy to, ask the commissioners, wouldn't it be a good date perhaps in the next two to three weeks, that we could have a separate meeting, not a three-hour meeting, perhaps a one-hour meeting, to have this discussion? We have a discussion document with a number of questions. We will circulate that and get additional input from everyone, and then hopefully have a Zoom meeting to just kind of walk through what the goals, suggested goals were at the beginning of the year, how they're being addressed, what kind of progress is being made, and whether there are any issues that the Board of Commissioners can help with. It's a fairly straightforward discussion. So Tracy, if you could do that, thank you very much. Okay, we're on to Integrated Resources. Chuck?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm waiting to see whether the slides come up or...
Yeah.
There we go.
There we go, great.
Okay, so I'm going to begin by sharing my platform with the general manager, so that she can communicate the green communities activity, supplement, I think whatever, what's already been said.
Okay, I'll go over it quick. So I just provided the link for the DOE Green Communities. It's just a brief discussion. I mean, green communities have to do with the towns, and so I'm going to be discussing this briefly as it relates to the RMLD. So if you're not familiar with green communities, that particular link is a pretty good one, because it shows the map of the United States, the map of Massachusetts, all the communities that are in it. And then it also scrolls down, and you can see the types of grants that the towns have received. The towns that are interested can make application. It appears that one such qualification for the application is for the town served by the MLP to have one IOU-meded customer residential commercial within the town making the application. However, and to be verified by the DOE-R possibly during this June 23rd Town of Redding call, is that all four towns within the MLP must join, and all four towns must have an IOU meter, or all four towns must pay into the trust. So I'm not going to get into details about what the payments into the trust have been in the past, that's up for the town to work with the state. But this is some information that was given to me by our legislative liaison just a couple of days ago, so I wasn't aware of that. The MLPs can request, the towns can request us to help facilitate the location of such a meter. The Town of Redding has asked us to look into it. Now typically, you know, an MLP should know, should know, if they have an IOU meter. And the reason why I say that is because under deregulation in 1998, they separated, and you couldn't, as part of the DPU home rule, actually have an IOU meter in your municipal territory, because it could jeopardize your home rule. So most of the people that find them is usually by happen chance, because they would have had to have been documented and discussed. So sometimes you'll find them because a house gets built in the middle of the woods, and let's say, for example, it's at the end of Redding, and you got wetlands, and then you got N-Star, Eversource, and Eversource can't get to that house. So they call us on the phone, and they say, hey, we just physically can't run the lines over wetlands, could you feed them? That's something that would be documented, and we would have that sent into the DPU for notification. Similarly, you would want the IOU to call us and say, hey, we can't feed them, or, you know, something like that, there's too much load at the end of the feeder. So we don't have anything. We have people that have been working here about 30 years, they don't know of any. We asked Eversource and National Grid to run a billing inquiry for us. Eversource came back and said they didn't have anything, and they abut Redding, and Wilmington, and National Grid abuts Linfield, North Redding, and Wilmington. We haven't heard back from the grid yet. As I said, the Town of Redding's having a call with the DOE-R on June 23rd, and myself and the chair is on that call, as well as, I think, Vivek. It'll be really interesting, we're really excited about learning, you know, more about this. If you want to go to the next one, Chuck? Tracy, sorry. This is just, this chart you see, I didn't pick any particular part of the chart, it's actually just the first section from that link that I gave you. This just kind of gives you an example of what were the grants that were given out. So like, for the Town of Acton, what they received for grants and what they did with the grants. The green communities, what's great about it is it really looks at the entire building envelope, but there is some commonality. There is some HVAC and lighting and fuel conversions that the RMLD does look at. If you want to go to the next slide, Tracy. But for example, we, within our business model, we do not handle like fossil fuel conversions. You can look through that list of grants, and you may have an oil burner in a school converted to natural gas, and that's a grant that you may be awarded, but that's not a rebate or something that we can look at and roll out a rebate. So there is some differences, and I, you know, obviously, the town is super smart, and they can look at all of that, but, you know, we would just want to make sure that if everybody's joining or whatever, that they continue to ask the RMLD and say, hey, like Wilmington did, listen, we'd like to do that, we would like you to run the analysis, maybe you could offer a rebate for this. There's probably ways, if it's coordinated, that you can probably get the best of both worlds, personally. But we did receive, we did ask for a grant, and we were awarded $250,000 a few years ago for LED lights, which you'll see a lot of those grants were for. $125,000 was for municipal use, and we did all four-town LED streetlight conversion, and $125,000 was for non-municipal, which helped all of our residential and commercial customers that did LED conversions. So again, we worked to review the technology adoptions to improve energy conservation, a cleaner environment. And we just, we're always looking at what the IOU's putting out. I said earlier, we're talking to the Climate Action Committee, we have some brilliant engineers that work here, so we're all reading magazines, so we're always trying to stay, you know, ahead of it, because we know that this new technology that can be greener can be costly, and that's why we want to target our rebates to help our customers to be able to afford to implement those type of cleaner changes. So you got great ideas, let us know. This is how we're seeing the green communities, and we're very interested in hearing what the DOE-R has to say, so that perhaps, you know, more support can be given to each of our four service towns. That's all I got on those slides.
Great, thank you, Colleen.
Sure.
Back to you, Chuck.
Okay, so, good evening. We have a lot of community representatives this evening, so just very quickly, I am the Director of Integrated Resources for RMLD, which means that I manage both the wholesale and the retail activities, and bring them into maximum economic and results-oriented benefits. So optimizing our portfolios for carbon emissions, price, reliability, et cetera, et cetera. Also, design and deliver the retail efficiency program, so that customers have the opportunity to improve and enhance their lives, as well as contributing to the environmental improvements. My first slide is just a brief update on some of the new programs that we launched this year. As Colleen mentioned, when we talked with the Climate Action Committee, they mentioned adding electric panel upgrades to our heat pump program, and so we did that. We also launched a cordless yard equipment program, and both of those program activities have gotten off to a far better start than we had expected. I'm going to have to go to Wendy and ask her if in her magnanimous generosity she can see fit to increase my budget for those programs, so that we can continue to offer the rebates for those. To date, and the program has been in effect about two and a half months, we've offered 85 rebates on cordless electric yard equipment. We hit the early spring gardening season, and people have been buying lawn mowers and weed whackers and cordless chainsaws. We've also got five air-source heat pumps already in place, two of those included electric panel upgrades. And I am pleased to note that we have had a significant number of calls in the last two days, as people have taken the covers off of their condensers and discovered that they need work, and are calling us looking to find out what's involved in getting a heat pump upgrade as opposed to just a standard compressor upgrade, so, or replacement. So we're expecting to see very good numbers there. All of that translates very well for electrification and for carbon emission reductions. So I just thought I would share where we are with those programs to date.
Thank you, Chuck.
So these next few slides are the traditional report that I make on how our power supply portfolio is performing against budget. I am pleased to note that in all instances, our costs are coming in below the budget expectation. As much as I would like to take credit for strong hands-on management, a significant portion of that is due to the warm winter that we experienced, and the reduction that we've seen due to COVID-19 loads. I will point out that the COVID-19 reductions were not as significant as we had originally considered when we did our scenario for the rest of the year. We had used 8%. We're actually seeing numbers for load closer to a percent and a half for the COVID portion of the reduction, and then the weather has also been significant in terms of reduced loads. Next slide, please. So these are our energy costs, these are the bulk of our portfolio expense, something on the order of about 70% of our portfolio is energy cost. And as you can see, we are tracking, we continue to track a little bit below where the original energy budget was. We are now coming into our summer period, and the next eight to 10 days are expected to be a longstanding high heat session. So we're looking to see what happens with that. We've already got our peak programs lined up and ready to go. We have our battery system online and functioning, so we're looking to mitigate the peak impacts for this month and the rest of the summer. So, next slide, please. These are our capacity costs. There is an issue with what you see in terms of February being budgeted significantly higher and coming in lower. I have some initial research that tells me that we make a lump sum payment to Braintree for the Watson unit in February. Energy New England put that in as a lump sum payment in the budget. Clearly, we are on a different track in terms of the payment that we make, so I'm working to resolve that difference in interpretation. The bills are being paid, it's simply how the information is presented. So we'll get that resolved and get the relationship between budget and actual squared away. Next slide, please. These are our transmission costs. Because our loads have been down, our peaks have been down, as a result, our transmission expense has been down, and we're running below budget for the year so far. So we hope to continue that trend. The portfolio, the energy portfolio is comprised of a number of resources. We've graphed up what we get for each resource during the month. Because the loads have been down, particularly in January and March, we see that the market we've been selling into rather than buying from on a net basis through the early portion of the year, we do expect as we get into the summer months that that will reverse, but that is primarily due to the weather conditions and the climate that we have experienced. Next slide, please. This is the first portfolio slide. Dave was talking earlier on about how much opportunity we had in our portfolio. We've been very busy lining up resources. When you looked at this in December of last year, most of those resources were not there, and we were looking at probably 70 to 80% of our portfolio being open. Since that time, we have engaged a number of resources that meet one of the two definitions that we have to work with right now. There are two defined sets of electric generation resources in Massachusetts statute. One set is defined under the Renewable Portfolio Standard. Those are resources that are considered renewable, and the definition of renewable was used...
Chuck, did you, did something go wrong technically?
When there was a Renewable Portfolio Standard that applied to the investor...
Chuck, your voice, your audio is cutting out, Chuck. Could you repeat the last statement, please?
Okay, well, I just got notification that my internet connection is unstable. There are two definitions for electric generation in the statutes. The first is the original definition, which was for Renewable Portfolio Standards, and it defined what resources qualified as renewable. There were nine separate resource types that qualified for that renewable standard. The replacement standard, the one that currently the IOUs are obliged to meet is the... is the clean energy standard or CES standard. That is a different definition of resources having to do with carbon-free generation as opposed to renewable. So there are some resources that are in both. There are some resources that only qualify as renewables. And there are others that qualify under the clean energy standard. The definition does include the retirement of RECs associated with the unit. But for the purposes of this discussion, without trying to generate an argument, I'm going to use the nature of the facility and the energy produced to clarify which of the two pools it would fall into. Our MLD either receives the RECs or has the right of first refusal on the RECs associated with the projects that we have acquired going forward. So at such time as we know what the standard is that we have to meet, we have the resources to be able to do that. Right now, there is not a standard that applies to us. So having said that, you're looking at a stack of resources and everything up to the light blue area meets one of those two statutory definitions. The thin gray line above the stacked resources is Stony Brook. That's the unit that Dave was referring to in Ludlum, Massachusetts. It is a small share of it. It is used for peaking purposes and we are not expecting to see very much dispatch from it. It can fire on either number two fuel oil or on natural gas, depending on the availability of the natural gas for that. The yellow line is a reservation that we have made in our portfolio as a risk management strategy. It is 15% of our load, which over the course of the year, we keep open to the market. Different amounts each month, but that 15% is sort of the risk mitigation for load volatility and price volatility. As we get into or approach the current year, we trade off some of that market exposure under our TFA. So if you take a look at the second column from the left, which is the year 2020, you'll see a very thin yellow band. That's because we took the TFA purchases and used those and the pricing to stabilize our risk and reduce some of our market exposure. So we have essentially a good portfolio going forward. Now, the last two pieces on the line or on the graph are the line portions. And those, I think, are the ones that most everybody has expressed curiosity about this evening so far. The lower line, the blue line, is what our delivered price of energy from our portfolio looks like if we retire the rec, if we, I'm sorry, if we sell the RECs that we get. If we retire the RECs and we called the option in on those RECs that we have right of first refusal, then the price becomes the red line. So right now, we're able to keep our energy costs from our portfolio by selling the RECs at under $40 a megawatt hour. This translates out to the retail price fairly directly. If we retire the RECs, then the price goes to just under $50, $50 a megawatt hour or 5 cents a kilowatt hour. That one penny is a one penny increase in our retail rate. So if our retail rates average about 14 cents across the board and we add a penny to that, we're looking at about a seven and a half percent rate increase to absorb the RECs into our portfolio and retire them. Now, that is the high and low end. The actual point is going to be a function of what RECs we retire and how much of those RECs we need to retire to meet the standard that will apply to us when the golden bill or some offshoot of it is passed by the legislature. So if we can go to the next slide please Tracy. What we have here, the dotted line that you see, the dotted red line, is the original RPS, renewable portfolio standard. It is to be met with renewable resources. The gray line above it is the CES, the clean energy standard, which is currently the standard that is applied to investor-owned utilities in Massachusetts. A change in the units that qualify and an increase in the component that the CES is of a utilities portfolio. The gold line represents the golden bill. That is the standard that municipal utilities have requested be the one that applies to them. And it starts out a little bit lower because the municipals, many of them have not made the commitments to the clean energy standard resources. So we have an accelerated slope in the early years. And when we catch up to the clean energy standard, we are going to continue the same pace as the investor-owned utilities in developing. So I've carried this chart out an extra 10 years to show how our MLD's portfolio plays out over time. What you're looking at in the colored areas are either resources that our MLD has under contract or is in final negotiations. These are not resources that are on the drawing board or sort of pie in the sky. These are actual physical resources that we are looking at or have under contract and agreements. But these all qualify for the clean energy standard. So we can selectively retire RECs associated with these in order to maintain our portfolio. The advantage to what we have done is that by selling the RECs, by keeping the price down, we have been able to be more aggressive about securing contract resources going forward. So we have a lot more flexibility in terms of being able to meet the golden bill requirements when those requirements come into effect. And I understand the definitional issues that we're dealing with because we're selling rather than retiring the RECs. But our portfolio looks pretty good from the standpoint of being able to exceed the golden standard. Should we choose to do that based on an assessment of the cost benefits and risks that that change in portfolio takes. So that's sort of where we stand on our power supply portfolio at this time.
Great, thank you Chuck.
So the last point that I wanted to cover this evening, we've been taking a look at COVID-19 impacts on our system. What it will mean to us, you heard Wendy, or Wendy's actually come up with an assessment of how we can manage our fund balances. But I took a look at where we are now through April with projections for the rest of the year and came up with just shy of $26 million in base revenues. The base revenues for 2019 came in at 26 and 3/4 million. So the difference is just shy of $800,000 with a net impact of a 3% erosion of our revenues. Also, the budget for 2020 was just north of $29 million for base retail revenues. That resulted in just over $3 million of difference or about a 10% impact reduction in planned revenues. But that is also offset by a reduction in kilowatt hours purchased and a number of other items in the budget. So just wanted to put this out here and show where we are, what we're looking at going forward.
So as I read this, the weather had a much larger impact than COVID, at least so far.
So far, the weather has had a larger impact. Going forward, we had originally assumed an 8% reduction in sales. It's actually looking like our residential sales are up a little bit, our commercial sales are down. And overall, it looks like we'll experience due to COVID, less than 1% erosion in revenues.
Great, that's actually good news. Thank you Chuck. I would like to move on to item number, if there are no questions. We're sure Chuck, are there any questions for him?
I had one, but go ahead. Was that Bob?
Yeah, thanks Dave. Hey Chuck, just, would you be a ballpark for what you would say we rely on with natural gas
Right now, our Exelon and Nextera contracts, the bilateral ones, are undefined. And I think they're about 40% of our portfolio. So I would attribute those to gas. And I would probably say about 80% of what we get from the market is gas. So we're probably in the 40 to 50% natural gas area.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Chuck, I just wanted to thank you. I just wanted to thank you though, the excellent presentation before. And I think the answers to the stuff that I was outlining are in there. I had to look at it more closely, but it's really a great analysis. And the presentations you did a few meetings ago, which I had alluded to, were also similarly, you know, really excellent in terms of the details. So I just wanted to thank you for that. Also, the detail that you mentioned where if we did something, it would raise rates a penny and a 7% increase is just the kind of thing I'd like us to be able to understand. If acquiring a new resource would have that kind of consequence, but then give us X more greenness or sustainability, those are just the kind of things I'd love to see the options and that we know. You know, I think a 7% increase would be hard to swallow for a lot of people. But I think we just should know what those kinds of numbers are, what that would get us. So that's all. I don't need any answers now, just want to thank you.
Well, I appreciate that. I do want to be very clear on one thing. That 7% increase doesn't do anything in terms of changing additional resources. It simply, as you've pointed out, converts our existing resources to certifiable green.
Right, I guess so. I think I understand that. I have nothing further. I said, thank you Chuck.
Okay, and there was a question that just popped up on the screen. The seven and a half percent would be across the board on all our MLD revenues.
Yeah, I think what we need to do is to dig into that a little bit further. And I agree with Dave, it's excellent presentation. I think we need to really understand what the, that impact would be across the board. As you were saying Chuck, just in light of sort of what's happening. You know, there are different ways to address this. I mean, one is, you know, if everybody gets the increase, if we agreed that there would be an increase in the first place to accomplish our goals. The other may be that there are people in the community who feel very strongly that they would like to see us move to this goal. And they pick up the cost for other people who can't or won't pick up the cost. So there may be some different options we can consider to do something like that. It's kind of a radical idea, but you know, something I would like to throw on the table is just brainstorming as we go downstream here and look into this a little bit further.
It's not a radical idea at all. We've been working on a green pricing tariff for a little over a year now.
Good, I hate to be radical. In the 60s I was. Okay, if there are no more questions for Chuck, I'd like to move on to the financial update. Wendy?
Hi, good evening. So this year threw us a little bit of a curve ball and we're still in the middle of the financial audit. Unfortunately, I haven't been able to present financials. We're just at the end of it. Usually it takes, you know, a couple of weeks and we're in our fifth week. And it's been quite a process with our team and the Melanson Heath team. But we should have good draft financials to present in July. And maybe they can even make the July meeting to present the financials. So what I want to do is just give you some highlights of what happened in calendar year 19. At the end of calendar year 19, we finished at a 9.33% rate of return, which is 1.33% over our 8% allowed. And there are multiple factors to that. We were under budget and one of the main factors is based on everything that Chuck's been saying all along is the mild weather impact. So when we prepare our budgets, we take a past average of storms for the emergency cost that it's going to take to sustain us. And our MLD storm overtime, mutual aid, tree trimming, emergency supplies, crane rentals and any additional equipment rentals fell well under budget. So we didn't have that additional cost. We also have mentioned multiple times, there are multiple vacancies within the department. I am energy conservation resources and the timing of those projects fell under budget. And on the flip side, we really worked hard to finalize enclosed advanced aid and construction jobs and bring in some money from whole hits with subrogation. And interest income, we can never budget properly and that kind of went off the charts from what we budgeted. So overall, that's where we ended up, under budget. So what we decided to do is take a look at a strategic plan of what do we want to do with that money, even though we didn't have to move it out of the operating fund, we decided that it's best, especially with this COVID situation, to help our customers. You know, there are a lot of customers in hardship right now. Business is closing, so that 1,077,000 went into the rate stable. Businesses closing, so that 1,077,000 went into the rate stabilization fund. And as you may remember, the rate stabilization fund is there to help stabilize rate fluctuation. Next slide. So the strategic planning involves some balancing of quite a few pieces. The base revenue impact, the rate of return, which we had decided we want to stay between 4% and 6%. We were up near 8, coming down to 6, but didn't want to go below 4. Our funding ability for the below the line town of Redding Payment. And we want to continue to fund our capital projects and continue on the right path of where we are, which means we need to take some money from the operating fund to continue to do that. We also had talked multiple times about keeping the operating fund anywhere from two to three months of available cash for operating expenses in case of any additional hardships. And we tried to stay up around three, but you know, again, two would be satisfying at this time. And we also have to look at the rate stabilization fund balance. We don't want it to fluctuate too much. And of course, all of that takes into consideration the burden of the rate increase to the customers. So with this reforecasting idea through the strategic planning, we've decided that the RMLD will supplement any rate increase for CY 21. And at this current time, we're talking about at least 7.7% rate increase. We will take $2 million out of the rate stabilization fund and that way it covers all classes of rates. We will continue to supplement a portion of the base rate increase for CY 22 and 23, approximately about 550,000 each year, which will be equate to about a 2% target. And then the RMLD will still continue to stay on target for all the capital projects that we have outlined in the six-year plan. Next slide, Tracy. So what I've done is I've just prepared a couple of graphs here so you can see some of the highlights I was talking about. In particular, the operating cash to operating expenses, you see how we ended at 2.92. That's the ratio. So almost three months of operating cash to your average operating expenses. And you see how it starts to dip in the CY 22 and then we're getting lower than two and a half months and then we come back up again. So we, you know, we're going to, we're going to get out of this. It's fine. And we're going to help the customers at the same time. Next slide. So here's your rate stabilization fund. You can see we started with $7 million and we added the 1,077,000. CY 20, we're currently in it, so we're going to make no change in this year. We are going to make the change in CY 21 and that's where your $2 million is going to supplement the idea behind the reforecasted rate increase. Now, of course, nothing set in stone. This is just a strategic plan that we're trying to outline right now. And then in CY 22 and 23, you have again about a 2% supplement of 560,000 and 587,000. Getting back around $6 million. We really want to target $6.5 million in our rate stabilization fund. Next slide. And this final slide, I think a lot of people like, this is, shows our capital fund balances, where the capital money is coming from and how much spending we have. And you can see the blue is the beginning balance. The orange is the depreciation, which absolutely has to be spent on capital projects. And your gray portion is the amount of money coming out of the operating fund to support additional capital projects. So you can see the right side is the green bar. We've separated the two major projects. The Wilmington Substation and the meter replacement project. The dark green is the Wilmington Substation, about $10 million. And the, the middle colored green, I don't know, I'm sorry, but is the about $8 million for the meter replacement project. So currently, those are the estimated figures. Of course, you know, we'll be releasing another set of budgeted numbers in September. But it's CY 22, again, that's where it gets a little bit, you know, uncomfortable. But you know, we're doing what we can to balance all of it. That's the end of my presentation.
Thank you, Wendy. It's nice to see that the rate stabilization fund is doing exactly what we intended it for, to help our customers, right?
Yes.
Any questions for Wendy?
John, may I ask a question?
Please.
And maybe Tracy can help me here, but we got, so Jim asked a question on Zoom message. I'm not sure we can answer questions through a messaging. So he's asking, is it 7.5% increase on the total residential bill? Sorry to go back to Chuck's, but maybe we need to say at the beginning of the meeting that people just need to ask the questions. I don't think we can answer them this way. Correct, Tracy?
I mean, the chat, I have to look into the open meeting laws and see what the protocol is supposed to be.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I've been busy with the presentations. I've been looking at the chat.
Yeah, that's okay. I think if it's just a comment, it's fine, but.
I think you're right. I think it has to be voiced so that it's recorded.
So if Jim is there, does Jim want to ask the question?
Yes, my apologies for asking a question in a not approved manner. It's what I'm used to doing at work meetings in this circle. And so the question was, when I get my electric bill, there are several different line items on it that add up to total bill. And one of them, for instance, I think is the fuel costs or the energy costs. So what I was trying to ask was when Chuck said whether that there would be a 7.5% increase, I was wondering if that was a 7.5% increase of the total bill or of one of those line items, which might mean that for the average residential customer, it might be one or 2% rather than 7.5%. So, but thank you.
Chuck, you want to take it?
Yes, I can take it. The answer is it is a penny increase across the bill. The average rate across our system is about 14 cents. So it's going to be a 7.5% increase on the total bill, not on one of the partial line items.
Okay, thank you very much.
If there are no more questions, could we move on to the engineering and operations report? Hameed?
Yes, good evening. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Hameed Jafari, Director of Engineering Operations. And I'm going to give you the report for engineering and operations. So the first slide is showing you the step-down upgrades. We've got a huge conversion project going on on North Main Street and Low Street in Linfield. This is huge project, big project, involves 55 poles and you know, these are all Verizon-set areas. So so far, 27 poles have been replaced and Verizon has been very cooperative, which I want to thank them for keeping up even during the COVID-19 construction restrictions. And they're doing a good job. So they're setting those up. And we are, as soon as you know, all of those poles are set, we're ready to roll. You know, there's lots and lots of old construction wires, open wires that they're coming down. And we've got about 20 31 Transformers that they're going to be upgraded. These are all Transformers. And on the right, what you see, the areas that include, this is almost approximately 15, 20% of the load in Linfield area. So, and they've been wanting to upgrade this for so long. And so we're going to be getting ready. We try to keep the construction limited to the areas that, you know, and the type of constructions that is going to have minimum impact on the customers and it won't require an outage. So that's why we picked these projects that, you know, get them ready. So as soon as, you know, we are ready to move on, we just go ahead and, you know, continue with constructions. The next slide, please. So this is one of the pad mount switch gears that, you know, we have another maintenance program that basically we are, we've got 29 units system-wide. So far, we have replaced nine of them. We've got 20 more to go. This year, we had a budget of $527,678 and we ordered the five units that they're going to be arriving sometime in July, August. And the areas that they're going to be targeted for replacement or upgrades are listed in the below, you know, Johnsons, Min Road, Haven Street and all of those straight river parks. So these are mainly the switches that they actually provide power to our commercial industrial customers. And right now, the existing switches, they're oil field and you know, if God forbid, if there is, you know, there's a problem with those, then you know, it's going to be. And also the Transformers, they're all the Transformers that they feed. So that's going to be huge cost to RMLDs. So we have a good program for upgrading these and we moving on. So we are right on target. Obviously, the COVID-19 a little bit put us a little bit behind, but we are catching up now that, you know, the construction start moving. The next slide, please. Okay, these are the maintenance programs that basically we have instituted and you know, they're all going good. So we are making progress, the infrared scan at the substations and at the commercial industrial customers, the equipment, the switches and pad mount Transformers. We go on and check them to make sure that, you know, there are no hotspots. So the commercial and industrial customers, they stay on power and they're not going to experience an outage. So we also have the manhole inspection program that is going on. And during this time, this is the best time to do that, that we are going around and inspecting manholes and the areas that, you know, we need to make repairs to the older sections like in Reading Center and also there's some in Linfield that you're going around to identify those and making repairs as necessary. These are the ones that they don't require really outage, taking outage. But you know, we're trying to utilize overtime and keep up with the maintenance to the best we can with the restrictions we have. Next slide, please. This is showing the aged transformer replacement program. This year, you know, so far we have replaced 27, you know, because of the, again, COVID-19 restrictions. We tried, you know, only to do the replace the Transformers that they don't require an outage. Doing the bypass, like a bypass surgery, trying to keep the patient alive while, while, you know, we making the repairs and moving the old transformer, removing the old transformer. So overall, system-wide, we've got about 38% of the Transformers that are over 25 years old, 25 years or older. What it means basically that, you know, this is the target, a year or age for the Transformers that we start planning to replace them. It doesn't mean the Transformer is going to fail right now or when they reach 25. What it means, you have to schedule them in order to, you know, keep up with the maintenance and start replacing them. So we have them all identified, you know, exactly where they're located. And with the prioritization of the age, you know, we go and replace them. The target is with those old huge pad mount Transformers that they got lots of oil in them and we're trying to, you know, replace them before they, anything happens to them, which could be very costly. And next slide, please. So this shows basically one of those activities of replacing the, basically the old pad mount transformer. This is 30 Opton Drive. You see that on the left, that's the old transformer that is very old and the bottom of that was rusty. So and on the right, you see that, you know, they cruise, they change that transformer. And you know, it was very, it was a smooth operation. And also the new Transformers are more efficient than older Transformer. So what it means, it's going to cut down the losses of system losses, which means, you know, it's savings basically for the rate payers. The next slide, please. That's also, I believe, that's also, yeah, that's a Transformer setting at 30 Opton Drive after it was replaced and you know, that's ready to go. And it's energized and you know, everything is. What the engineers, they do, what we, as we go through this program, we calculate the load and if the Transformer is oversized, we make sure that, you know, we bring it down. So to cut down the losses, no load losses. And if the Transformers, they need to be upgraded, also we upgrade them. But like what I said, the new Transformers are more efficient. That means they're lower losses. Next slide, please. This one shows the primary metering inspection and testing. Currently, we have a program that we have approximately 85 installation. You see on the right, basically the, in the bottom, that's the type of, in primary metering installation, overhead construction. And the one above that, it's the pad mount installation. So we've got both types. And these are the one, the equipment and the equipments are old, some of them. So we need to test them to make sure, number one, the equipment and mirror accuracy. Number two, the billing and discount accuracy as we go through this process. Also, we assessing the conditions and see that, you know, the ones that they need to be upgraded for the reliability purpose, which is upgrade them. So we started the, we started the program with pilot sites. 10 installation, we have completely tested. They're okay. Everything went through billing, the condition of the equipment as well as their mirror accuracy, they're fine. However, we have a contractor and that, you know, it's as soon as the COVID-19 restrictions are removed by governor and the state, that they're ready to come in and go through that and test them all. The name of the contractor is Anexter, that, you know, we have, we have a contract in place with them. And soon, we're hoping that by mid-August, it's going to be done. And as we go through these, like what I said, we're going to upgrade whatever that, you know, is necessary. And CTs, PTs and everything, which is very important to the reliability of those commercial customers. Next slide, please. Okay, this is a capital improvement spending year today through, actually through the April we have. We have spent more since then, but basically it shows that the total spending is approximately $2,47,000. We have in the budget 11.5 million, so we've got another 9.5 million to go. And part of that 9.5 million, it's kind of like about $2 million that that is for the meter replacement and about $600,000 that is for the land for the substation that Colin and I are working on, trying to secure the land for building the new substation. The next slide, please. Okay, this shows double poles. I'm not going to go over everything. So you're pretty much familiar with that. Those, I mean, that's a ball in court. That's engine program that is shared among all the utilities. And basically it shows ball in court. And as you see, in the Linfield area and also in the Wilmington area, we have those poles that we need to transfer. And again, the reason those numbers are high and I do appreciate our valued customers' tolerance and patience. Because we try to set the poles and, you know, do the projects that is having minimum impact on their, you know, on the outages and doesn't, they don't require outages during this COVID-19 crisis. So we're going to, as soon as, you know, we have these restrictions removed. So actually, we are right now working on those still and we're trying to do the transfers as long as, you know, it's not going to create a problem as far as, you know, giving outages to the customers that we, we don't have to. But some of those are required outages. So we are going to get to those as, you know, the conditions improve. So those are basically the double poles situations. The next slide. These are showing the health of the system, basically the SAD, KED and SAFI. As you see that, you know, all the numbers, we track those to the APPA's E-reliability tracker. And we're well below the regional and national averages. So we are doing very well. Considering the storms, the number of storms that we've had, you're going to see in the next slide that, you know, well, this is what, thank you, Tracy. You see that, you know, we've had more storms this year than any other years, the average of the past five years. And we've had lots of trees that they came down and damaged the lines here, there. But still, despite of the fact that we've had these issues and problems. So still, the reliability is doing really great. And if you see the equipment, you know, the equipment we've had, we have like about seven compared to five years average of 16 during that month of April. So we are, the equipment failures are going down and that's what we'd like to see. That shows that, you know, those maintenance programs are really working. So we have under the category of, you know, others, I know this is some, sometimes the people that have questions. These are the one that corroded connections and also the fires that we have for unknown reasons. So we don't know what caused the fire. Sometimes the building says the services and during the contact with the trees or something that, you know, anything that, you know, caused the, caused the fire. And the announced are burnt fuses or blown cutouts or, you know, inside problems, the customer inside problems. burnt fuses, or blown cutouts, or, you know, inside problems, the customer inside problems. So that's, those are, these are the categories that we send to APPA, and they are actually collecting that data and the outage time, and they compare that within other rate class, within our meter class size, and then they annually, they're gonna tell us that, you know, how well we did, and so far, we've been doing really great, we continue working on that and getting it better and better. And that also gives us another indication that, you know, what we need to do in order to, which area we need to beef up, in order to make sure that, you know, we keep the reliability indices to the level that we like to. This slide shows basically the facilities, the pictures that Colin was referring to the parking lot, so this was a great project, and it's done, and it looks really great, so that's one of the facilities projects, that was completely done, and, you know, was very satisfactory. The next one please. This shows, the picture on the left shows those silicon treatment of the roof, that the project is completed now, now that means, you know, I'm glad that, you know, we're not gonna have any more roof leaks, so that's, and that's gonna take care of that, and the one on the right, it shows that patio that we built, we condemned that old deck because of hazards, and it was one of the OSHA issues that, you know, we needed to take care of immediately, and we demolished it, and now this is, actually, today, what they're doing, they install the railings and they put the stairs on, so, this is almost ninety-five percent completed, so, they're hoping that, you know, by end of the year, that's gonna, all gonna be done. That concludes my report, if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Thank you Hameed, I do have one question, that's the replacement of the twenty-seven poles by Verizon, were the poles, were the poles rotten, or did they get some input from us, or are they planning on doing other things with the poles, such as 5G?
Yeah, well, these are the ones that, you know, yeah, some of those were picked up as part of the pole inspection program, and some of those, no, because we upgrading the entire area, so we need to go to upgrade the poles, and we go to taller poles, so we have more, we meet the NESC separation and the requirements, and yes, there is gonna be room for the 5G on those, and as we go, and, you know, upgrade those, yes.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Hameed? If not, I think we can move on to item thirteen, we've already actually asked Tracy to solicit a date, so we're gonna move past that, I think we're into basically just the next RMLD board meeting, I see it's suggested Thursday, July sixteenth, if, does anyone have any issue with that?
No.
Okay, and the CAD meeting, I guess I'm in the, selected for the CAD meeting for July, which happens to the same day, just an hour before, so that's great. And board material, no accounts payable or payroll questions, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Good. Well, that concludes our regular meeting for tonight, I'd like to have a motion, Phil, if you would, to move into executive session?
Move that the board go in executive session to discuss the purchase of real property and to return to regular session for the sole purpose of adjournment.
Second? Rob, thank you, and roll call vote, Mr. Stembekai?
Mr. Coulteri?
Excellent, thank you everyone for the meeting, and thank you to our public participants here, it's been very interesting, I hope you didn't mind watching the paint dry too much at the, at the end of the meeting, that's what we do.
I think we all enjoyed it, we're kind of here as a group, Jim and Lynn and myself, from the organization that Jim wrote to you about it, I just wanted to thank you for a fabulous meeting, I'm so impressed and very hopeful for the future.